Call to order the Arvada City Council meeting for June 3rd, 2019. Call upon Kristin Rush to do the roll call. I'm sorry, let's do the moment of reflection and pledge of allegiance first. That's what happens when I don't look at my agenda, I just, you know, I've only been doing this for eight years, you'd think I know better.
Thank you.
Ms. Miller.
Would you please join me in a moment of silent reflection? And now for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Now having my script in front of me, Kristin Rush, would you like to call the roll?
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Marriott.
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Here.
Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Councilmember McGough.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Mr. Pfeiffer.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve or dismiss David Jones from tonight's, or excuse, gosh, I can't get, man, our scripts are not working tonight, excuse David Jones from tonight's council meeting.
Mr. Jones previously gave us indication he would not be able to be here tonight. All votes were cast. That passes six to zero, thank you. Next, we have recognitions and communications, and tonight, we have a special treat, we're going to have the introduction of the new Community First Foundation Executive Director, Kelly Duncan. Ms. Duncan. And I think that former councilmember Erin Azari is going to make some brief introductory comments, and then we'll bring Ms. Duncan up.
Thank you, Mayor Williams, Councilmember. My name is Erin Azari, I serve on the board for the Community First Foundation and the Executive Committee. Earlier this year, we, Marla Williams, who was the executive director for the Community First Foundation retired, and the board has nominated and appointed a new president and CEO of the Community First Foundation, Kelly Duncan. It's my honor to introduce Kelly to the city council this evening and to the greater city of Arvada. Kelly?
Good evening, thank you, Mayor Williams, city council members, we really appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. I thought I'd give you a quick overview of Community First Foundation. We are a community foundation, and like most community foundations, we focus on finding opportunities for donors to create funds to make a difference in their local community, and then we make grants to nonprofit organizations. So we look to power positive change in the community by connecting donors and nonprofits. But what sets Community First Foundation apart is we have created a vehicle so that all donors, regardless of economic level, can participate in philanthropy, and that's Colorado Gives. I know many of you have probably participated in Colorado Gives Day, and I want to thank you for your donations, and I hope you will join us in making this year's Colorado Gives Day, it's December 10th, if you want to mark your calendars. Last year, we raised about $35.3 million in December, and we had 58,000 donors, so I invite all of you to help us beat that record in 2019. And for those of you who like to plan ahead, you can plan your donations ahead of time, you don't have to wait till December 10th. What also sets us apart is we are the only community foundation in Colorado focused on Jefferson County, and who has their office right here in Arvada. We're just down the street, and we're very excited about that. And not only have we put our office space in Arvada, but we've also created space in that building for collaborative space that is free for nonprofits to use. We have space that can accommodate up to 60 people, so anyone here who is affiliated with a nonprofit, who needs space, we invite you to go to our website and reserve that space for your use. And then we focus on three areas with our grant making. The first is honoring our heritage in Jefferson County, and we look to promote community health in Jefferson County. That's more than just healthcare services, those are all the other things that make us healthy, economic prosperity, social cohesion, and environmental and community conditions that promote health. We also focus on promoting mental wellness throughout the seven county metro area, and finally strengthening nonprofit organizations through programs like Colorado Gives and our nonprofit endowment partner. We are happy to boast that we host 107 nonprofit endowments at Community First Foundation. So what's next for us? I just started about three months ago, and what I learned through the search process and in my first 90 days on the job is we have all the pieces in place to achieve great things. We have great financial resources and infrastructure, we have experienced staff, we have a committed board, and we have community members like you that we would like to partner with to write our next chapter. And we're very intentional about the word "chapter," we know that for our story to make sense, one chapter must build on the next. So we're looking not to rewrite history, but to build on that history to achieve even greater things in the future. So I invite you to help us think what that future might be. We start strategic planning towards the end of the year. If any of you have ideas on where we should focus, whether that's geographically, topic area, or partners that we should be talking with and engaging, I invite you to let me know. And I will stop now, thank you for this time, and open it up for any questions.
Mr. Marriott's going to lead it off.
Thank you. Thanks, Ms. Duncan. I have a question for you, how much annually does Community First grant out within Jefferson County?
Annually, it's about $2 million, that's focused solely on Jefferson County. It's actually quite a bit more because we also have some metrowide work that also benefits Jefferson County.
Okay. And if I'm not mistaken, I believe you guys were a big part, or a part of the Red Rocks Community College expansion a few years ago.
Yes, we were, we're a proud supporter, we contributed a million dollars to expand the Arvada campus of Red Rocks Community College, and we also worked with them to create the nonprofit pathways program.
Yeah, great, well, thank you very much for that, I appreciate it.
Sure, thank you, we're proud to be a part of it.
Ms. Duncan, we at the city have had the benefit of being able to use your community space at your, at your facility there at Wadsworth and just north of 58th Avenue, and it works out really well, and we appreciate your willingness to make that available to nonprofits and organizations such as the, as the city for those purposes. Some of the issues that we hear about every meeting and throughout the weeks and days as we talk to our constituents and as we talk to our counterparts around the metro area, homelessness, attainable housing, are those, are those areas that we might be able to do some partnerships on?
Yeah, we'd love to talk to you more about that. I've been going around doing a listening tour, talking with partners, meeting with all the Jefferson County Commissioners, meeting with Superintendent Glass, community members, and those issues have risen to the top as something to be addressed, so it's absolutely something we're thinking about. We don't have any definitive plans right now, but welcome you to help inform us and educate us as we think about where our focus areas will end up.
Absolutely wonderful.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions from council? Not at this time, but we look forward to the partnership, we congratulate you, having known Marla Williams for a number of years.
She's wonderful.
She was an excellent executive director, and I know you will follow along in her, in her stead and do an excellent job as well, congratulations on your position.
Well, thank you very much, and thank you for the time tonight.
Next, we have some public comment, and I've got four people who have signed up, the first is Tom Tennessee, or Tennyson, I'm sorry, Tom.
Tom Tennyson, I live on 57th and Dudley Street, and I want to ask for your help in the, reducing the speeding on 57th Street, it's become absolutely obnoxious anymore from our fine citizens who think we live in a neighborhood that's a drag street from Old Wadworth to Independence. I have gotten so frustrated, I went out and bought a radar detector, a baseball one, and I figured that was good enough to measure the speed of cars, and I regularly find people speeding anywhere from 47 to 50 miles an hour on the street. And today, I stood out there for 10 minutes and got many people doing 40 miles an hour. And I'm trying to wonder if we're a, you know, a neighborhood or a thoroughfare, and it's getting very aggravating from that standpoint. And when you look at it, you know, Ralston Road has six stoplights between Independence and Old Wads. Well, the reason they come over to our street is we got two four-way stops, one at Carr and Grandview, and one at Fels and Carrview, and I can tell you, I have caught people going 47 miles in three, three blocks coming from Fields and heading east, and it's just wrong. I've talked, I've reached out to the police department, and, you know, they've said, oh, we'll, we'll help you, we'll get some more patrols in there. That was a week ago, I haven't seen anybody in our neighborhoods to help do it, help do anything about it. We have the school down the street, and I can tell you, the 20 mile an hour, mile per hour signs are just suggestions. Last week, I was coming back from Independence early in the morning, and someone blew right through the stop sign at Fields and 57th, because they were in such a hurry to get to Santiago's to have their Mexican burritos in the morning. And I was just appalled, because then they happened to get back on Independence, race down to Ridgeview, and race all the way to Wads. So I'm, I've reached out to enough people on, on the network out there to find, everybody's got the same complaint in, in Arvada, or at least in our area with regards to that. So I'm looking for some positive change here, if we can get it, to help slow people down in our neighborhood, and there are no patrols coming around. We had a drug dealer who lived down the street from us, and it took us six months to get him out of the thing. Now, drug dealing's a little different than speeding, but nobody thinks anything of speeding through the neighborhood, so I'm, I'm reaching out for some help here from city council to do something. And, you know, studies aren't going to do it, it's just taking action and doing something to the stop sign. You guys are fortunate here on 59th, and I run down your street, to have three stop, four-way stop signs in three blocks. We've got one in a mile and a half, well, a little less than a mile and a half, because we have the stop sign, or the stoplight on Wads, so can we have some help on, on that issue? Thank you for your help.
Thank you, Mr. Tennyson, what we'll do is we'll have our city manager speak with our chief of police, we can look at some options. When it comes to stop signs, there are certain warrants that have to be met in terms of justifying stop signs, but we can also look at things such as bringing in the temporary trailer with the, you know, the radar for, showing the speed and stuff, that's, that's helped in some neighborhoods, so we'll look at, at what we can do. I thank you for bringing it to our attention, and we'll, you'll be hearing back, I've got your information, and somebody from, from our team will be getting back in contact with you. Next, Tim McCormack.
Honorable Mayor Williams, Mayor Pro Tem Marriott, and members of the Arvada City Council, my name is Tim McCormack, and that's spelled M-C-C-O-R-M-A-C-K, my address is 1398 Cherrywood Drive. I am a candidate for your district attorney for the 17th Judicial District, serving Adams and Broomfield Counties, and the many wonderful communities served by the district attorney, including the exceptional city of Arvada. I have dedicated my 27-year career in district attorney offices in public service and public safety, and serving the communities in which I am a part of. I am invested in my communities, I am proud to say that I have resided in the district for the past 20 years. Two of my three children were born here, all three have attended public schools. My wife and I are involved in serving and promoting our communities through schools, community events, and functions in our church. I'm committed to public service and a strong proponent of your public safety. Over my 27-year career, I distinguish between good citizens who have made mistakes and those criminals who prey upon our communities. I have cultivated a strong, collaborative, productive, working relationship with all criminal justice providers and anyone who has had or has come in contact with the criminal justice system, to include judges, law enforcement, prosecutors, defense attorneys, and victims of crime. I seek justice for victims and provide fairness to the accused. Your district attorney should pursue justice for their communities without any predetermined agenda. I have practiced and tried to teach the prosecutors that I have worked with, supervised and mentored over my career, that there is a difference between human frailty and genuine evil, and to act accordingly when dispositioning in their cases. Everyone, regardless of politics or political affiliation, deserves to be safe. As your district attorney, every decision I make will not be dictated by politics or political affiliations, or how they will affect political careers. Rather, every decision will be dictated by my desire to keep you and your family safe from those who will do you harm. I have the experience, I have the leadership, the knowledge, and the desire to bring new and strong leadership to the district attorney's office, and to be a district attorney that works with the communities it serves. We've all heard the saying that elections have consequences. I believe that compromising your public safety should not be one of them, the safety of you, your families, and the communities in which we live and work, and to work in our communities to prevent the commissions of crime from happening in the first place should be the top priority of the district attorney's office. If you'd like to learn more about our campaign, please visit our website at www.mccormackfordda.com, Please join us in that effort, and thank you very much for the opportunity to address this honorable counsel.
Thank you, sir. Next, Joshua Rodriguez.
Hey, city council. My name is Joshua Rodriguez, I'm a resident in Rothen Estates here in Nevada. I'm also a director of One Arvada, which is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. I'm here today to ask about a fee waiver for one of our events. So, some, a little bit about One Arvada, is that the right way?
Turn it around.
That's us, One Arvada. We, we are a nonprofit benefiting homeless youth. One of our past events that we did was School Supply Drive, we did a couple of those. That one started out with working with our, our neighborhood, community members through Neighbors Connected here in Arvada, and it kind of grew into a nonprofit. And so we do, we do a couple of things, we did a Easter event, we did Adopt a Family for Christmas. Right now, we're working on a community event called Battle of the Bands, that's why I'm here. And we're working with a lot of nonprofits, so one of the nonprofits we're working with is a storytellers group. So in between the band transitions, we have about 15 minutes, we're going to have two young people from Arvada who are homeless or were homeless, they're going to just talk about their experiences about homelessness, so we're, we're trying to be a little creative. And what's nice about it, it's a community event, so everything that we have put together for the event, powering the event, Arvada Rentals helped that, helped out with that, Stubens is helping us, and we have other groups called Wheelhouse Scouts, they're helping us with the skate park event, and that one's a Dave Tuck Invitational. They did Skate Park Event 2013, so we're collaborating with a lot of folks, and it's going to be fun. Some of the investments that we've made was, we contacted a corporate group, they do corporate art, their, their company's called DeMERGE Art Group, they're making us King of the Snake trophy, so those types of cool things. This is all community-driven, so this is a free-for-one Arvada, but, so it's kind of fun. Why am I here? So, we're doing this event, and right now, we have $1,170 in fees. One of them is a requirement for a police officer for six hours, $45 an hour. I don't necessarily think it's necessary to have an officer there, you know, it's a community event, we probably have about 100 folks there, so that's a cost. Then we have about $900 in park rental fees, and so a lot of that cost you would think would go towards any collateral costs, you know, cleaning up or any of that jazz, and I had a chance to speak to Mike McDonnell, he's the parks manager that helps out with the skate park. He told me that any, any of the actual cost would be around $250, so 900, 250, you know, so I'm basically here to ask the city council if we can get a fee waiver, or a waiver on those types of things, so we can actually have the event. If we have to spend $1,100, we can't have the event, the event can't happen. And so I think this is a really cool thing for the community, so I'm here to ask the city council to kind of help us out. The event's going to be on June 15th, it's coming up fast, and so we, we're asking for some assistance.
Okay, well, as you know, having been here during public comment, you'll have the opportunity to make your public comment, we'll direct it to city staff to give us feedback as to what our policy is on fee waivers, what the justification is for the fee, and then, Mr. Devon, is this one where we typically defer to the, to your office and to your team in terms of are fee waivers appropriate, and if so, how much?
Yes, that's our, we're the one we.
Okay. Fair enough. You bet. You bet. Next, Eric Kwame and Jennifer Kempz.
Hi, I'm Eric Kwame with the Festivals Commission.
And I'm Jennifer Kempz with the Arvada Festivals Commission. We also are the co-chairs for the upcoming Arvada On Tap. This event is presented by the Arvada Festival Commission. This is the fifth year for the event, and the event benefits our three local non, local charity nonprofits with Arvada Jefferson Kiwanis Club, Arvada Sunrise Rotary, and the Arvada Vitality Alliance. Last year, we were able to provide each of our nonprofits over $5,000 towards their cause. So the event date this year is Saturday, June 22nd, from 2:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. at Ralston Park at the corner of 64th and Sims. Tickets are on sale now for $35 each, which includes unlimited beer tasting from over 25 local breweries, sampling at the amateur barbecue contest, live entertainment from the main stage, and full access to our community vendors and our kid zone. New this year, we're introducing a VIP ticket for $50, which provides access an hour earlier, starting at 1:00 p.m., premium parking, access to our VIP tent with water and plenty of shade, plus a commemorative Arvada On Tap t-shirt.
Ooh.
I know. So we hope the council will join us this year and help us promote the Arvada On Tap event coming up Saturday, June 22nd, and we hope you will join us as part of the community. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Thanks to the Festivals Commission, you guys do an excellent job every year of having some terrific events and some great outcomes, and so thank you for your continued work on this. Anybody else like to address city council during public comment portion? Yes, sir.
Hey, everyone, how you doing?
My name's Joel Nelson, I live in Old Town, Arvada, I'm off of 54th. I wanted to bring to the attention of the city council an issue my wife and I encountered when we purchased our dog, and we, I looked at all the regulations and rules that go along with having a dog in Arvada and our HOA. Well, we noticed with our HOA, we wanted to, as well as all the other dog owners, modify our HOA rules to allow for certain invisible leashes to be used in HOA common areas. The problem we found is that these HOA common areas are actually superseded by Arvada City Code. I do have the code right there, copy of it, I also have copies for all of you guys, if you'd like me to hand those out now.
Yeah, why don't you just bring them up to either Ms. Miller here or over there, and I'll get them to us.
Awesome. So, the Arvada City Code, it describes running at large, which is when your dog is not in control of you by a cord or leash, no more than 10 feet, or you are off your public property, or the custodian of the dog's public property, and then it further clarifies public property to not include HOA common areas, even though those are public property owned by the HOA and maintained by the HOA and the community itself. What we would like to bring to the council here is suggesting that we remove the section that does not allow the HOAs to decide how to enforce and/or what type of leash laws, codes, rules that they would like to see on their own public property, common areas, et cetera. And of course, not sidewalks, because most of the time, those are city-owned and operated anyways. This would allow our HOA and our dog owners, the HOA, to then implement invisible leash rules within the HOA without getting fined and violating those rules. That's pretty much it.
Very good, thanks for your presentation. We'll, again, we'll direct this to the city manager, who I'm sure will then direct it to the city attorney.
Perfect.
Or, or we'll, we'll ask the city attorney, look at this, and then give us some feedback, could you give your information to the, to the city clerk, so she's got that, so somebody can get back in touch with you, and, you know, we'll, we'll see where it goes, but this, this is, this is your local government at work, this is how you make changes happen, so, so we'll see if this is one where, where it makes some sense.
May I make a comment to Councilman McGough? It is good to see you up in Adam, last time we talked, you were quite literally in a hospital chair, glad to see you're doing well.
Thank you, yes, thank you very much, I'm glad to be here, or anywhere.
And we're darn glad to have him. Okay, anybody else wish to address city council during public comment? Yes, sir.
Good evening, guys, my name's Ethan Lutz, I live on Otis Court, I just want to take this time to recognize Carice Canales, everyone involved in the community engagement programs, Neighborhoods Connected programs. We just recently, this weekend, threw our third annual block party on Otis Court down here, between 66th and 67th, right near Apex Seacrest Center. It was a huge hit, Carice is always accessible, flexible, as far as barricades, tents, everything we can ever need to throw a good party for the neighborhood, she helps out immensely, everyone connected with the neighborhoods as well, and I'd, again, like to thank Mr. McGough as well for making it to the party. He sampled some of the food, we roasted a whole 130-pound pig this year, which was a first, there was nothing left. He did not get in the bouncy castle, but I'm going to not hold that against you. But it was a pleasure to have you and to speak with you, and the neighborhood really appreciated it, we talk about it every year, and everyone looks forward to it, so I just wanted to recognize that community engagement program, they, they help immensely, so, thank you.
Very good, thank you.
And my timing was good, I left before the rain, the downpour.
Yeah, it didn't slow us down, no.
Good for you, good for you.
Yeah, we're really proud of that program, and getting the community engaged like that is really, and to see, hear your success story is absolutely wonderful. Okay, next, anybody else want to address city council? Moving on then to new business, we'll start with the consent agenda, we have three items on the consent agenda, the first is a resolution authorizing a fifth revision to the City of Arvada City Council Strategic Plan, 2014 to 2019. Second is a resolution authorizing a construction contract between Arvada and Stone and Concrete Inc. in the approximate amount of $256,000 for the 2019 miscellaneous concrete replacement project. And the third item on consent agenda is a resolution authorizing the third budget amendment to the 2019 operating and capital budget in the amount of $1,744,311 to fund the Ralston Trunk Sewer Replacement Project. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Mr. Pfeiffer?
Move to approve the consent agenda, as stated.
Motion, motions to approve. All votes are cast, that passes six to zero with Mr. Jones being absent. Is it just me, or are the microphones kind of in and out tonight?
This is a new audio system, so I'm sure we're.
Let's go get the old one back.
Well, the, the old one was worse.
Yeah, there is some, but anyway.
We'll continue to work on it.
Fine tune it if you would.
Yeah, yeah.
We have one resolution before us tonight, and that's Resolution R906, or 054, Resolution Creating a Census 2020 Complete Count Committee to Plan and Conduct Local Engagement Activities to Increase Community Awareness and Participation in the 2020 Census. Mr. Devon.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we actually have Jenny Poole Radway from the Census Bureau that's here, we have a short presentation for, for the council to view, and then we'll welcome you to consider the resolution.
Good evening.
Hi, can, can you hear me?
Yes.
Because I've been up there, so I can hear it going in and out. Good evening, nice to be with you tonight, thank you for having me. So I work for the 2020 Census under the Department of Commerce, and we're really excited to be working with the City of Arvada. We just want to do a very short presentation on what you need to know and do now. My first spreadsheet, or PowerPoint piece, is around funding. There's $675 billion up for stake in the next 10 years, so we really, really need people to have a high response rate to the census, and we need to make sure that they do it only once and in the right place. So we're trying to do a lot of education as to what it means to fill out the census correctly, and also have people comfortable filling the census. We do a lot of census, census engagement and partnership with local entities, you guys are the trusted voices in the community, we work a lot with nonprofits, we're working with Community First Foundation, cities, counties, and so we are excited to partner with the City of Arvada and have what we call a complete count committee, which will hopefully help us reach out to everyone in the community so that we can make sure that we have a high response rate for the 2020 Census. And finally, our goals and our challenges, again, Again, educate about the importance. We want it to be just as important or seem just as regular and normal as "Did you vote? Have you registered to vote?" Because this is a great way to participate civically. It is constitutionally mandated to motivate people to respond and to support the community's mobilization efforts. Any questions?
Mr. McGough?
Yes, I believe I heard some time back that for each person in the count, it amounts to about $1,500 that may come to the municipality.
Yes, that's correct.
Is that number about right?
About right. It depends on where you live. If you live in a rural community, it's a slightly different number.
But for example, thinking ahead to the census, getting an accurate census in Arvada, it might make that much difference for each person who's included in the census.
Yes, so if we undercount by just 500 people, we miss out on $7 million over the next 10 years.
Thank you.
And not only is it important from that perspective, but also in terms of our representation in Congress, correct?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so we're looking at going to at least one more, conceivably two more representatives in Congress.
That's correct.
So, obviously, very important. I know that our team here at the city, and Ben Thurston is involved, and others are involved from the city team. Mr. Devon?
Yes.
That's actually Ben Irwin, our-
I'm sorry.
Communications manager.
Sorry, Ben, I know who you are.
Yes, correct.
Yes, very good. It's gonna be one of those nights. Okay, Ms. Ford?
I'd like to make a motion if there are no other-
You may proceed.
I move that R-19-054, A Resolution Creating a Census 2020 Complete Count Committee to Plan and Conduct Local Engagement Activities to Increase Community Awareness and Participate in the 2020 Census be adopted.
All votes are cast. That passes unanimously with Mr. Jones being absent. Thank you so much. Look forward to working with you.
Thank you. We look forward to working with you, too.
Next, we have ordinances on first reading. Mr. Marriott?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that Council Bill 19-022, An Ordinance Authorizing the First Amendment to the 2019 Operating and Capital Budget in the Amount of $1.44 million, and authorizing intergovernmental agreement by and between the State of Colorado, acting by and through the Department of Transportation, and the City of Arvada pertaining to State Highway 72, Ward Road, and West 58th intersection improvements, Project Number 15-ST-22, C.D. Project Number 22276. And also, I move that Council Bill 19-023, An Ordinance Authorizing the Second Amendment to the 2019 Operating and Capital Budget in the Amount of $525,000, and authorizing an intergovernmental agreement by and between the State of Colorado, acting by and through the Department of Transportation, and the City of Arvada pertaining to the signal replacements at 58th and Independent Street and 86th Parkway and Kipling Street, C.D. Project Number 22275. And I also move that Council Bill 19-024, An Ordinance Rezoning Certain Land Within the City of Arvada, Hidden Acres, Filing 1, From City of Arvada RM Residential Multifamily to PUDR, Planned Unit Development Residential, 11.1 Dwelling Units Per Acre, and Amending the Official Zoning Maps of the City of Arvada, Colorado, 8530 West 52nd Avenue. And finally, I move that Council Bill 19-025, An Ordinance Authorizing an Intergovernmental Agreement Between the City of Arvada, Jefferson County School District R1, and the Arvada Fire Protection District for the Use of Arvada's Fiber Optic Network for Current and Future Broadband Communications for Public Into the Operations. All be approved on first reading, ordered published in full, and public hearings set for June 17th, 2019, at 6:15 p.m.
Motion's for approval on first reading. All votes are cast. That passes six to zero with Mr. Jones being absent. Next, I'll open the public hearing on R-19055, A Resolution Setting For Certain Findings of Fact and Conclusions As To the Annexation of Certain Land Into the City of Arvada, Colorado, Barbara Nichols, 6350 and 6360 West 56th Avenue, and Council Bill 19018, An Ordinance Annexing Certain Land Into the City of Arvada, Barbara Nichols, 6350 and 6360 West 56th Avenue, and Council Bill 19019, An Ordinance Rezoning Certain Land Within the City of Arvada, Barbara Nichols, From Jefferson County A1 Agriculture to I1 Light Industrial, and Amending the Official Zoning Maps of the City of Arvada, Colorado, 6350 and 6360 West 56th Avenue. All be opened at this time. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We have Rob Smatana, who will introduce these items.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As mentioned, the applicant is requesting annexation of two parcels into the city and approval of a rezoning to I1. The site is located just south of the intersection of 56th Avenue and Kendall Court. It is approximately 1.8 acres in size and is currently occupied by a couple of residential structures and accessory buildings that will ultimately be demolished in order to construct a 35,000-square-foot building for Barbara Nichols. There is a concept plan and conceptual elevations that were provided to you in your staff report. Staff does recommend approval of the annexation and the rezoning based upon the approval criteria found in the Land Development Code. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the annexation and zoning at their May 7th meeting. We have received the signed posting log and mailing affidavit, and they are in order. The applicant is in attendance for a presentation, and we also have Planner Jeremiah Bebo here to answer any questions as well.
Very good. Any individual that wishes to testify in this matter, if you'll raise your right hand? It's where I affirm the testimony you could give, and these proceedings will be the truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth. Okay. I believe Ms. Miller has a preliminary matter she wishes to address.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to disclose that Barbara Nichols is a sponsor of Blues &amp; Barbecue for Better Housing, and I serve on that Board of Directors. I do not benefit from that personally, and that will not impact my vote tonight.
Very good. You may make your presentation, sir.
Mayor Williams and City Council, thanks for taking the time tonight and allowing me to present Barbara Nichols' plan for expansion. We've got an overview for you, and I guess first, I'll start with personal information. My name is Dan Thorin. I'm the president of Barbara Nichols. I started at Barbara Nichols in 1991, so I've been there a while. I started as an engineer, engineering manager, became president, and then have been president since 1997. The second page gives you a little bit about Barbara Nichols. We tend to fly under the radar a little bit. We've been around since 1966. We're an engineering, manufacturing, assembly, and test business. So, we have engineers that draw up plans from scratch, clean sheet of paper. We have machinists that machine all of the parts. We have technicians who assemble and test them here in Arvada. We've been growing at 10% per year since 2002, and each year, it gets a little tougher and a little tougher to maintain that growth rate. In 2002, we were about $5 million in revenue. In 2018, $40 million in revenue. In 2002, we had about 35, maybe 40 employees. Today, we're up at 122. So, we've got a mix of engineering folks, manufacturing folks, technical assembly-type folks. Current buildings are around 53,000 square feet. We're looking to make a significant jump in floor space because we have kind of filled up all the nooks and crannies of our current space. So, next slide gives you a little bit of an overview of our business and the industries that we serve. The four there are industries that we serve. All of them kind of go up and down as the economy goes up and down. And generally, by staying fairly broad in a bunch of different markets, we can remain pretty stable as a business. The top-left picture is a picture of the SpaceX Falcon 1 rocket. So, when Elon Musk first started that business, he came to Barbara Nichols and said, "Hey, I need a pump that will power my rocket." And so, we started working with them. We've worked with Jeff Bezos at Blue Origin. We've worked with Sir Richard Branson at Virgin Orbit. So, we're working with a lot of the new space-type of companies. The upper-right is a cryogenics representation. So, that is a physics research facility at CERN in Europe. We make a lot of cryogenic pumps that supercool the magnets and allow them to be superconducting so that as they accelerate the particles around and then eventually bash them into one another, they can do it with as little energy as possible. Lower-left is a picture of their Virginia-class submarine. So, Barbara Nichols makes the air turbine pump that's used for torpedo ejection. In the old days, in the old movies, you heard the captain say, "Fire the torpedoes," and you heard this big whoosh. So, they used to launch them with air. Right now, what this thing does is it launches it with water. So, it basically pumps water out of the sea into the torpedo tube and pushes it out silently so that our guys in the sub are more safe that way. So, a pretty kind of high-technology types of equipment that goes in submarines. And then the energy business really is niche-type energy. It's not commercial-type business for us, so it kind of goes up and down depending upon the price of oil. So, we get involved in a bunch of different industries, kind of high-tech-y stuff, very much engineer-to-order type of work. So, since you don't probably know a lot about us, I wanted to give you that kind of overview. The BN Campus is the next slide. So, the- The existing campus is shown in the solid line. The expanded campus is shown in the dashed line. And then that white kind of rectangle is a concept of where the building would lie on the lot. It's evolved since this picture, but you get a sense of, we're continuing to add to our campus, and it will be an integral part. That new building will really house all of our manufacturing. So, right now, we've got manufacturing spread between three different buildings on our campus. We'll consolidate it all into that one building and do all of our manufacturing within the City of Arvada proper. Right now, we're all in Jefferson County. The land is comprised of three different lots. There's two long, skinny ones, and then a really short, narrow one at the south end of the lot. The expansion requires annexation, rezoning, replating, site development. I believe what you guys are considering tonight is the annexation and rezoning. And I presume I'll be back to talk about the replating and site development. Is that true, Jeremiah? No?
I think we're doing it all.
Okay. Next slide is the proposed site plan. So, you get a sense of where it is. It's on 56th Avenue, across from Kendall Court. The picture on the right-hand side shows kind of a representation of now what our most recent building looks like. So, it takes up half the lot. The other half is a lot of parking for that lot. The front end of the building is a two-story office part of the building, and it will house manufacturing-related folks. So, we'll have production control-type people, purchasing people, manufacturing engineer, quality types of folks in the two stories in the front end of the building. The majority of the building is a high bay that all of our manufacturing machines will fit in, and then the very back part of the building, the south end, will be two levels that have a meeting room so we can all get together and honor our employees, talk about what's going on, et cetera, and then storage area in the back also. And then the final slide shows the conceptual elevation. Kind of bottom-left is an isometric view of what the front of the building looks like, and then the planned views you can see above that. And that's all I have.
Very good. Is there any other member of the public that would like to address City Council during this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion. Open it up for City Council questions or actions. Mr. McGough?
Yes, thank you. The information provided indicates that the main entrance is off 56th Avenue. Is there, there is a secondary ingress/egress point on 55th?
Yes, so if we go back to slide, was it three? It's where we had that campus map with the yellow lines, yeah, there.
Yeah.
So, you see the main entrance really does come off 56th, and then we have a connection on that common line between our existing campus and the dotted line area. And then you can actually drive all the way through and come through on 55th, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Marriott?
Yeah, just a quick question. I noticed the new building, your building, will have about 55 parking spaces or so to go with it, and you have somewhere around 115, 10, 20 employees, something like that. Do you have sufficient parking on the rest of your campus to accommodate all the employees who will be working there, both now and as you grow?
Yeah, right now, it's a little tight, so the additional parking spots on the new place will help quite a bit. But we still have open slots today. I'm guessing around 20, but it's, yeah, it's getting pretty tight.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other questions. Anybody wish to make motions? Mr. McGough?
Yes, I would like to move, I move that R-19-055, A Resolution Setting For Certain Findings of Fact and Conclusions As To the Annexation of Certain Land Into the City of Arvada, Colorado, Barbara Nichols, 6350 and 6360 West 56th Avenue be approved.
Motion's for approval of the findings of facts. That passes six to zero with Mr. Jones being absent. You may proceed.
I move that Council Bill 19-018, An Ordinance Annexing Certain Land Into the City of Arvada, Barbara Nichols, 6350 and 6360 West 56th Avenue be approved on final reading, numbered 4689, and ordered published by title only. This motion is based on the findings of fact adopted by the Planning Commission.
All votes are cast. The annexation is approved, six to zero. And one more.
One more. And I finally made it. Okay, I move that Council Bill 19-019, An Ordinance Rezoning Certain Land Within the City of Arvada, Barbara Nichols, From Jefferson County A1 Agriculture to I1 Light Industrial, and Amending the Official Zoning Maps of the City of Arvada, Colorado, 6350 and 6360 West 56th Avenue be approved on final reading, numbered 4690, and ordered published by title only. This motion is based on the findings of fact adopted by Planning Commission.
Very good. Mr. Marriott would like to address your motion.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to make a quick comment and just say I will be voting yes on this motion to rezone this land. I think it's really important that our homegrown companies like Barbara Nichols have the ability to stay here, and I want to compliment them on both, you know, staying here and producing further development here, but also your incredible business success and the benefits you provide to our community with the good jobs that your employees have and for all that you do, increasing our employment base and industrial base in the city. And thank you very much, and we wish you great success in the future. Thank you very much.
Good. Mr. Pfeifer, if I could have your vote? No problem. Yeah, let me join Mr. Marriott and the rest of council. I'll be supporting the motion as well. Barbara Nichols has been in this community for a good, long time. Those of us who've been here a good, long time know what a great corporate partner you have been in so many different arenas that you are a great corporate citizen. I echo what Mr. Marriott says in terms of how much joy it brings to us to see homegrown businesses who have been able to stay in Arvada and then expand in Arvada. We really like to work with folks like yourself and congratulate you on a successful six-to-zero vote. you on a successful six to zero vote on this, and we wish you every success as you move forward. Keep those jobs and those dollars coming into our great city.
We're working hard at it, thank you.
I know you are, thank you so much. Next, I'll open the public hearing on Council Bill 19020, an ordinance amending Section 6.17, signs subsection 6.17.10b, additional standards for detached temporary signs, and subsection 6.17.11b, duration of temporary signs by material class of the Land Development Code, such amendments pertaining generally to the subject of temporary signage. Mr. Devon.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We'll have, again, Plenary Manager Rob Smetana introduce this item.
This is a request by the city to amend a couple of tables within the sign regulations generally pertaining to site signs and yard signs for temporary purposes. This is a result of a discussion that council had at their March 25th meeting regarding the Land Development Code, and so staff is following up with that. The two sections that would be amended, or the two tables that would be amended are Table 6.17.10b, and the section that relates to site signs within single-family residential areas would be modified to remove the restriction that there be at least two acres of property involved. So this would allow one site sign generally in any residential, single-family residential area. The other table that would be modified is Table 6.17.11b, and this would extend the timeframe at which temporary signs could be put out for yard signs and site signs. That would change the days from 60 days to 150 days. The proper notice of, in the newspaper was provided, and staff does recommend approval of the ordinance changes before you.
Very good. Is there any member of the public that would like to address City Council on this issue? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion, open it up for City Council question or action. Mr. Marriott.
Thank you. If there are no questions, I'd make a motion.
I think you sort of led the charge on this, so I'll let you proceed.
Move the Council Bill 19-020, an ordinance amending Section 6.17, signs, subsection 6.17.10b, additional standards for detached temporary signs, and subsection 6.17.11b, duration of temporary signs by material class of the Land Development Code, such amendments pertaining generally to the subject of temporary signage be approved on final reading, numbered 4691, and ordered published by title only. This motion is based on the findings of fact adopted by the Planning Commission. And I also want to make a comment before I vote. So I will be voting for this. I, the, I think it's very important that we have a sign code that does not restrict speech, particularly political speech. And I think each candidate whoever runs for office should have a whole menu of options available to them from lots of signage to no signage if that's what they so choose, and that our code should not put any restrictions on that. And I feel that this gets us closer to that than we were before, and I think the, particularly this, these modifications to the code really reflect what traditionally has been the political signage season around here and doesn't put any more restrictions on that. And this doesn't apply, obviously, just to political signage, but applies to, to all signage. And I think this is the right answer for us, so I will be voting yes on this.
Motion for approval. All votes cast. Passes six to zero, Mr. Jones being absent. Because he's absent, he cannot put out any campaign signs. Next, I'll open the, we said we were going to appoint him to something tonight, this might be a better way to deal with it. Next, I'll open the public hearing on Council Bill 19021, an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of certain property along Ralston Road, generally from Yukon Street to Garrison Street, for the construction of street, sidewalk, utility, drainage, and other related improvements as part of the Ralston Road Yukon Street to Garrison Street project. Mr. Devon.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is the project that will reconstruct Ralston Road between Yukon Street and Garrison Street as a four-lane arterial highway with a center meeting and a two-way left turn and eight-foot detached or 10-foot attached sidewalks. It's basically the first phase of the Ralston Road improvements with our Bond project following up, which will move us forward. Actually, this is, no, I'm sorry, this is the Bond project. My mistake, this is the Bond project. So this is the acquisition of the, of the right-of-way for the Bond project. And in order to complete that construction, we need the acquisition of fee simple rights away, permanent easements, and temporary construction easements. We've been negotiating and working with the property owners, and this will give us the authorization to continue that work and make the acquisitions that are necessary for this project to move forward, and we recommend approval of the ordinance.
Any member of the public that would like to address City Council on this issue? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion, open it up for City Council questions or actions. Mr. Marriott.
Again, if there, or actually, I have a, I have a couple of questions here. Start with Mr. Devon. You mentioned, I think, in your synopsis that the property owners have been in, you've been in contact or your staff has been in contact with property owners leading up to this ordinance that we're approving tonight?
I think we've had preliminary discussions with them. I don't think we've reached any conclusions yet.
Right, but there, but there are no property owners there that have no idea this is happening, and tonight's the, first they're going to find out that there may be some acquisition of their property.
We would, we'd be surprised if no one knows that. I haven't actually verified that myself, but we know that property owners are aware of this.
Okay, widely known. And then one other, just quick question. Are any of these property acquisitions that we're contemplating as part of this project a full acquisition of somebody's property, or are these partial acquisitions to allow the expansion of the?
Partial acquisitions. There are no full property takes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mr. Pfeiffer, questions?
Question while you're bringing those up. So I got a phone call on, I want to make sure that some conversation took place for Mr. Parker's, Dave Parker's property. Did we have that conversation I asked for?
Yes, we did. Our, our staff reached out to Mr. Parker and did clarify, I think, some questions he had about what part of his property was involved in the acquisition.
And we got a satisfied answer from, we're, we're good?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Marriott.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move the Council Bill 19-021, an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of certain property along Ralston Road, generally from Yukon Street to Garrison Street, for the construction of street, sidewalk, utility, drainage, and other related improvements as part of the Ralston Road Yukon to Garrison Street project, number 18-ST-40, be approved on final reading, numbered 4692, and ordered published by title only. And I'll also make a comment here. I'm going to vote yes for this. I think this project is a very long time coming. Looked at the plan several times over the years as, as they've evolved, and, and I think this is a really sensitive plan that both accomplishes the widening and the pedestrian improvements, but yet, as the question was just answered, doesn't take any full acquisitions of anybody's property and leaving all these property owners as best they can be and, and ultimately everybody in a better situation if that street flows better and works better and is safer for pedestrians. So for those reasons, I'll certainly be voting yes.
Motion for approval. Passes six to zero, Mr. Jones being absent. That concludes our public hearings for tonight. I'll reopen the public comment portion if anybody would like to address City Council at this time. Mr. Rodriguez.
I'm Mr. Jackson Rodriguez, Ralston Estates here in Nevada. I want to talk a little bit about affordable housing. I looked at UC Denver's Hometown Colorado Initiative that they did with Arvada, and when they were looking at affordable housing in particular, they looked at different property sites. So some of the features or amenities that they were looking at were like transit, is there a pharmacy nearby, parks, supermarket? And so out of all the available land, you kind of get this variation of, oh, this is a good property, we'll label it green, this one's yellow, it's kind of okay. And so I went to those sites and looked at the properties, and I investigated a little bit about who owns them and stuff like that. What I found out was some of the sites aren't very good. They're not large enough. Some of the sites are being built on. So in total, there was probably about four properties that would be like, oh, yeah, this would be perfect. But they're starting to be built on, so we're, we're losing those opportunities very quickly. So we kind of need to start looking at how to protect that. One site in particular is parcel ID 2023201014, and that one is owned by the Church Ranch Company, and the master planner for that is Jeff Nading. He wants to do a residential component, and right now it's owned corporate, and so we're kind of talking a little bit about an opportunity to build affordable housing. And I knew this summer there'll be another opportunity for the city to explore other sites. The thing, the reason why I'm talking about this is because I don't want us to do a plan, right? I don't want to see a plan, and then all of a sudden, all those properties are disappearing because we're doing nothing about getting them, buying them, or finding partners that will invest their time, money, and energy. I'm willing to start a project if we can find land that was, would be acceptable. I'm pretty sure there's a whole bunch of community members that would help. They probably have a lot of young people in their houses that they want to get rid of, so they're probably like, yeah, let's, I'll help you. So I know there's people out there that would, that want affordable housing that would help, so that's it, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to address City Council at this time?
Hello, State Representative Brianna Tutton. I just wanted to let everybody know, might be watching on TV, I'm going to be doing one of my beer events, Beers with Brianna. It's going to be at the New Resolute Brewery over on Candela's, and it's at 6 o'clock tomorrow night, so if you want to come down and talk about some of the issues, I'll be down there 6 o'clock till whenever people get tired of looking at that great view out there and enjoying the great beer. So come join us and enjoy a beer, it's a conversation. Thanks.
Thank you, Representative. Anybody else? Okay, then we'll move on to City Council reports. Mr. Marriott.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to report on one thing that was, I, I participated in, but this really wasn't a City Council thing. RTD Board Member Shelley Cook for our district has conducted several tours of the Gold Line and Union Station, and I attended one of those with her on Saturday. It was really well-attended. It was about 25 or 30 community members who all took the opportunity to get the expert's perspective, which Shelley certainly is, on the insider tricks and tips on riding the, the Gold Line down to Union Station and then to other places from Union Station. And I really just wanted to compliment Shelley Cook for doing that. I think that's a tremendous service for an elected official to do for her constituents. She took all day, and I think she bought all the train tickets, so kudos to her for, for really doing something positive to make that Gold Line even better than it already is, and trust me, it's really good already, so thank you.
All right, Ms. Miller.
Thank you. I just wanted to echo your comments on the neighborhood block party made earlier today. Thank you so much for speaking up. I too had my very first block party on our street to kick off Memorial Day weekend. I live in a very transitional neighborhood in Arvada where nobody knows each other. Most of the neighbors have been there six months or less. The Upper East Side, I live on the Upper East Side of Arvada. And it's really cool to bring the neighbors together and get people to know each other. We had about 25 different homes come out, and I would just encourage everybody to throw a block party this summer. You know, we encourage that through Neighbors Connected, and it, it really is a very cool thing, so please, please have a block party.
Mr. McGough.
Just to follow up on that too, would mention that I attended two block parties this last Saturday, and both were great successes. The first neighborhood was that, forgotten the name of it, but it's right behind the Old Neighborhood Restaurant, the townhouses that are there, townhouses and apartments. Wonderful gathering. And then over on Otis Court, where we had a roast pig, 150-pounder, and lots and lots of kids, kind of a choo-choo train ride, bouncy house, which I did not take part in. And just, it was wonderful to see the, the whole neighborhood come together, and basically all the houses on the street contributed in some way or another to the success of that gathering. And as I mentioned, I got out of both of those before the downpour, so my timing was good too.
That's great. I, I just want to comment for a moment on the horrible events that hit Virginia Beach on Friday. And when it happens in a municipal complex, it kind of affects us, I think, more than, than it might affect us just because we know how important our teams are and our people are. And certainly, we look at the school shootings and are greatly impacted by those, but for those of us in the municipal world, this one really, really hit close. And I think that I have to commend our City Council and our team for really engaging in active shooter training. It's something that we don't want to think about, it's something we don't ever want to see in our community, but they happen in communities. And I applaud our police department. We have some national experts on our team who have not only helped our community but have helped other communities in terms of training. God forbid we ever have such an event in our proximity, but I do think that we've taken the right steps and that we continue to take the right steps, and that our thoughts and prayers should go out to not only Virginia Beach, but also every other community that's, that's had to suffer through these, these horrible, horrible experiences. Mr. Devon, what do you have for us tonight?
Actually, Mr. Rodriguez, you can say that. We're actually going to get a message out to our team tomorrow, expressing much of what you said and also reminding them why we have to stay engaged in active, things like active shooter training and, and, and the safety precautions and the safety measures that we've implemented since, over the last several years, which has been implemented with the City Council's support, and we appreciate that. Other than that, we have a workshop next Monday, and the items. We've got an update on the Land Development Code with the Planning Commission. So update on the, the next code module, so we'll be looking forward to that discussion with the City Council and Planning Commission.
Very good. City Attorney's Office, anything to report tonight? Very good, thank you. We stand adjourned. Everybody have a good evening.